I'd like to call the order, to order the Monday, December 16th, Craven County Commissioners Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark. Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Booker.
Here. Stand with me if you would while our county attorney, Mr. Eric Grady, reads a prayer and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God of all creation and source of unending peace, be with these commissioners and bless them. Let good work be done within these walls. May only truth be spoken here. Give to those standing here the wisdom to know their weakness, the humility to acknowledge your strength, and the courage to let justice be the sole motivator of their work. By the manner of their lives, let them proclaim the rightness of walking freely in your sight. By their love for our county and for their fellow citizens, may they serve well those who sent them to this place. May they lead by following you, the author of all truth, and show the way by cherishing your presence in their hearts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone and make sure your phones are on silent so the meeting is not disrupted. Commissioners, do you have the agenda in front of you? Is there anyone who wants to make a change, addition, deletion?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Item number two is the Craven County Board of Education request approval of a renovation project. We welcome Mr. Stacy Lee. He's the Chief Officer of Systems and Operations. Mr. Lee.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. Today I bring forth an approval for another repair and renovation project. This one is to replace a unit at West Craven High for the band room. The amount of the work will be $104,250. And just as a reminder, these are repair and renovation dollars, lottery dollars, that are provided by the North Carolina Department of Instruction. We're asking for approval for this, please.
I have to approve.
Second.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Madam Clerk, would you please read the, uh, call the roll, please?
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark. Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Very good.
That was easy.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Stacy. The next item, item number three, is the Health Department Acceptance of FQHC Funding Award. Mr. Scott Harrelson, our Health Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yes, sir. The funding amount from, through the federally qualified health center is for $32,566. They gave us a fair amount of latitude on this, as long as we can tie it back to quality improvement services for our patients. And there are several things listed here, a little bit of training for the staff, so a few supplies. One of, some of the bigger ticket costs are, revolve around the clinically-integrated network change that we would like to make. We're excited about this. Clinically-integrated networks are for Medicaid patients, and it's about driving the quality improvement for those patients, care coordination for those patients. The FQHCs have a health center-owned clinically-integrated network that we can take advantage of. And it does have a one-time startup fee of $10,000, and then $750 for the five providers that we would have in it for primary care. But we get back from this new clinically-integrated network a dollar fifty per covered member each month, and we have about 5,500 members. So during the course of a year, that'd be about $100,000 that we're not getting from our current clinically-integrated network. And we also would be open to any cost savings. And I think that that group had shared cost savings of about 1.3 million this past year. So we're excited about the opportunities to join this new group. And we think we would get better service for our patients as well. But I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the other covered by the $32,566.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Harrelson?
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $32,566.
Second.
Okay. The motion is approved and accept the FQHC Funding Award Budget Amendment in the amount of $32,566. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for your support. Merry Christmas.
Have a merry Christmas. Commissioners, I need to go back. I skipped over item number one, the consent agenda. Consent agenda, we have the minutes of the December 2nd regular session, tax releases and refunds, donation check to the Sheriff's Department, which is a budget amendment, and economic development request for public hearing, Project Emerald. Did I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Next item, number four, is human resources. Personnel Resolution Amendment, Technology Device and Network Policy. Mr. Steve Bennett and Jennifer Morris. Good morning.
Good morning. So this one, we are presenting a request for a Personnel Resolution Amendment for the Technology Device and Network Policy. Policy changes are based on the progression and expansion of technology, as well as the enactment of North Carolina General Statute 143-805. Just currently, we have a policy that does, within the Personnel Resolution, that does govern technology resources. That one identified as email, internet, and computer resources policy was established in 1999 and amended in 2006 to add the mobile office computing equipment. In the current policy, viewing materials that contain pornography outside of the course and scope of official duties is prohibited. However, the new law goes to additional specifics which have been included in Section F, Number 13 of the recommended policy. Those include, public agencies shall not permit the viewing of pornography by their employees on the network of the agency. Public agencies shall not permit an employee, elected official, or appointee of that public agency to view pornography on the device owned, leased, maintained, or otherwise controlled by the agency. It also does include exemptions for officials or employees engaged in specific activities of the course and scope of their official duties. Delightation for, of the disciplinary actions that will be taken in response to the violation of the policy must be included. So in your package, you should have a recommended technology, device, and network policy to replace the current email, internet, and computer resources policy, which is amendment of Personnel Resolution is requested to adopt this revised policy.
Okay, thank you. Steve, did you want to speak on this?
Uh, no, sir. We're here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Questions?
We had to go through a similar thing for the public schools, obviously, I think applies to all groups. And there seemed to be a difference in reporting, which I always thought all of this was common sense and already in the law, but I guess not. A difference in report, how you report it, too.
There's an annual reporting requirement, and that is included in the new policy as well.
Anyone else? I just noticed that item F, which is prohibited activities and policy violations, says Craven County, if Craven County determines that any employee has used electronic technology resources in a manner that violates a policy, the violation may result in disciplinary action up to and including dismissal. So this is a serious thing. And I'm sure that each department manager will be responsible for communicating this, Jack, to their employees.
Yes, sir. We will, um, once, of course, if we approve this, we'll get a memo out from HR and IT advising us in policy. And absolutely, it's personal conduct in our, in our policy, personnel policy. And this is a pretty serious offense. Yes, we'll look at everything when we're considering any action.
Yep. It goes without saying, because it's already in place, but this is just, I guess, an enhancement.
There's more specifics to this one. And we also do plan to develop a sheet for everyone to sign stating that they've received the information and are aware of the changes.
That's good. And also, there's a provision in there for people who need to look, for example, some of the sheriff's people may need to look at specific stuff to make a case or to give the DA information. So that's legal, as long as it's part of their required job.
Yes, sir.
Right? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. By the way, I just want to add, the Commissioners are covered by this also. It's not just employees, it's us. So everybody, everybody that has a county device, so. Okay. No other questions? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I hate to have to go back in time, but I did not get a motion in a second to approve that.
Second. I'm sorry.
No, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Because it's a policy, I want to make sure we have it. Would you mind doing the roll call one more time?
Yep.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Thank you.
I just had a quick question for Jack, too, the policymakers here. Once noted, is this required to report to law enforcement, too? Is there, if it's, uh, how, how does that work?
Well, it's situational. I mean, obviously, there's some laws related to this type of material. If there was some opinion, I guess, from HR or administration that this may cross one of those lines, we'd absolutely report it to the Sheriff's Office. And I know he has folks that specialize in this type of thing. I think in general, if it's, if it is legal, then it follows personnel. If it's illegal, it's going to follow a judicial process and a personnel policy process. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item number five, Water Department Asset Inventory and Capital Improvement Plan Engineering Services. Mr. Dale Booth. Morning, Dale.
Good morning. How you guys doing?
All right.
Good. So the Water Department is preparing to conduct an asset inventory assessment. So what that is, is basically a study of all of our existing assets, linear being pipes, vertical being pumps, and wells, tanks, of that nature. In that assessment, we'll look at what we have existing. We'll look at the condition of our existing assets, and then we'll look at the criticality of those assets. And by that, I mean, if something were to happen to that asset, what is the ramifications of that? Would there be service lost or, or whatnot? Once we do this assessment, then we'll develop a comprehensive 10-year capital improvement plan. So that capital improvement plan basically lays the foundation for what we'll do in the next 10 years to address the needs of the county as far as it goes with water systems. So not only in replacing or rehabbing our existing assets, but also addressing any existing issues we have in the system that may be identified by hydraulic model, and then also preparing for future growth for up to 10 years out. So that kind of lays our financial framework, so we'll know exactly what, how much money we'll need to operate this, the Craven County Water System, for up to 10 years. We issued a request for qualifications for interested engineering firms to provide these services. We took a look at the proposals that were provided to us. We interviewed the interested firms, and we came to the conclusion that we would like to select CGS Convenance to use their engineering services to conduct this AIA and CIP process. They have a thorough understanding of our system, the existing system in Craven County. They have a lot of experience in asset inventory assessments and developing CIPs, and they have also a lot of knowledge of expansive water systems like we have, because we are, while we may be a rural system, we are incredibly large as it goes, as water systems go in North Carolina. So they have a lot of experience there. So the staff is asking that you guys award the contract for engineering services to CGS Convenance to perform AIA and CIP study.
Any questions for Mr. Booth?
Mr. Chairman, yes. So what's the cost on this, Dale?
I don't have an exact cost. That wasn't part of the request for qualifications. We are budgeted, I believe, $180,000 this year to do that. And I feel like that should come close to covering the cost of this study.
Any other questions? I was on the city board for four years, and we identified some water mains and pipes that were several hundred years old.
Yes, sir.
The city's got a real challenge to keep current and to replace the stuff that's that old. Do we have any idea, maybe not a fair question to you, but do you have any idea how old our older stuff could be?
So coming in, you know, I'm relatively new to the system, but I did as much research as possible. We're a relatively young system. I believe piping dating back to maybe the late 70s. I know some of the James City stuff that was taken over is probably a little older than that. But for the most part, we are a largely PVC system. So we don't have a lot of ductile iron, and even as best as cement. And I believe New Bern had wood water main. I mean, there was, there's stuff in the ground here from colonial times that people weren't aware of when they looked.
There is. There's still stuff in the ground that is, what do you call that? It's like clay-based.
Oh, yeah, terracotta. Yeah, terracotta pipes. Yeah, that, that, that's stuff from, from a long time ago. No, we don't have that in our system right now. And luckily, a lot of our stuff is going to be brand-new with the highway project running down 70s. So a lot of that stuff is being replaced right now.
Okay.
So we don't have any issues with that. I think our biggest issue, the wells, are, are looking probably, I believe they were, you know, 50, 50 years old now. And to my knowledge, when I came in and took a look around, I don't know that this has ever been done with the county. And it's also very important, because when we look for state and federal funding, the state looks at this and sees, are you doing your due diligence with the maintenance of your system? And so this is a big component of that. They basically have a score sheet. And when you apply, you know, these are some of the first items on that score sheet. And if you don't have this done, then you basically, you're starting behind everyone else. That's another important component.
Very good. Anybody else have a question? No?
No. I would make a motion that we approve this.
Second. Okay. We are requested to approve the award of the Craven County Water System Asset Inventory Assessment Capital Improvement Plan, CIP Development Project to CGS Convenance and authorize staff to execute all necessary documents and agreements related to this project. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Thank you, Dale. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
This is not about this change.
Right.
So I spoke with a resident in Craven County this week, this weekend, and she's very happy with the water system and the water and so forth and so on. She says she's not able to pay her bill online anymore. Did something change with that, where she has to write a check to pay her water bill?
No, actually, I'm not sure what she, we have changed the payment system. Our original payment system is there, which was ACI payments, which wasn't, I guess it has online component, but it's also a telephone component. What we've done now is we're trying to transition to what's resident access. So we did the MUNIS integration. And part of the MUNIS integration was a payment portal where customers can view their bill. With ACI, you can't view your bill. You can just call this number and put in your account information and then pay your, whatever's on your bill. Now they can access that and actually see what their bill is, when it's due. They can set up reminders. There's a whole lot of customer service things that are involved in that. So I would encourage you, and if you contact me, I'll give you the information, or IT can give you the information of how you can get that customer registered with asset, I mean, asset, resident access.
Okay.
So they can do that. So we actually have more options to pay online now. I think some people, since we removed the ACI off of the bill, I think people were confused that it went away. And it didn't go away. We just transitioned over to a different. And we've had flyers, we put flyers in all the bills to tell customers how to register for that access.
Could you resend that to us, please?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Happy holidays, guys.
Say, we had the same issue, Dale, and Dale helped my, one of my residents with that. I do want to ask a question, though. If you, if you're a resident who doesn't have any internet access, is there still a call-in option?
Yes, sir, there's still a telephone option. Yeah, yeah. So we, we're trying to do as much as we can to keep people having to drive across the county to pay bills.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Item number six, Budget Amendment. Mr. Jack White, County Manager.
My Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. Today I'm here to present a budget amendment related to the Commissioners' budget. When we were completing and going through and programming out all the memberships that the Commissioners have, there was a discrepancy for the East Carolina Council of Government. They had a increase in their membership, and then one of the pieces was billed separately, so that was not included in the budget. So to make that work, we were able to move money around back in September to make sure we could make that payment. But I'm here today because not only are we short on that, we're also short on the travel and training budget due to an upcoming conference that the Commissioners want to attend. So today I'm asking for a $21,000 budget amendment to make whole the ECC payment from September and also increase in travel, shown in a budget amendment attached to item six.
Questions for Mr. White?
I move to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. No other questions?
I was going to make a comment that the ECC was a, an increase was like a, for all members across the board.
Correct. It was across the board. That's correct. And it wasn't that we didn't prepare for it. It was that what, that increase came after we had already set that number in the budget. So it was never gone back and, and fixed after that point. I think you guys voted on it in April, and we put it in in March.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Would you please read the, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Thank you.
I'll just make a comment on ECC, too. They provide really vital services to, ET knows this, and probably more so now with the current leadership in David, to places like Cove City, Vanceboro, some of your smaller municipalities. And I think, of course, we have, they offer us things, too, and services to our community members, as Ms. B. knows with some of the food programs that they had, that she was, she was intricately involved in. But they do offer a lot for our community. So I do think, you know, it is a small increase and probably worth, worth it, you know. Even at the ECC meeting, I was questioning, you know, why should we increase now? But I think there's been a market improvement in services to local communities, so.
Correct. And if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner, it was the first increase in over a decade, I believe.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item number seven is appointments. And Commissioners, you'll see under pending, there is a whole long list. Please take a look at those, and if you have any, any of those that are in your district, you need to be prepared at the next meeting to discuss those.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Under pending.
Yes.
I do have one. We have an application that was given to the clerk this past week for the Vanceboro Craven County Library. I'd like to ask the board if they would to consider Mr. Brent Manning for this position.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Mr. Manning will be on the Vanceboro Craven County Library Board.
Thank you, sir.
Any others on pending? Okay, let's look at current.
Ask the question, please. I, I note that under pending, a couple of the boards, I have folk that I'm on the board with. However, I mean, I, I'm on the board where this pending. However, I don't think that I need someone from my district. Is that not correct? Because although, so if I'm, for example.
Which one are you referring?
For example, I'm giving you the Agent Planning Board.
Okay.
I don't know that we need another person from my particular district on the board. However, we need someone on the board.
Correct. And that, and you're on, or you're on that board.
I am on the board.
Yeah. So we will reappoint you at the next meeting.
Oh, so that is what, that, that is me? It's leading on that board?
That would be you. Am I correct on that, Jack? No?
No.
I'm familiar with this one particularly right now. I'm familiar with this one particularly right now, but we've, we've struggled to get interested parties. Sometimes we'll have them come for a couple of meetings and then...
Cause we're trying to get them from across the county. Is that not true?
It's, it's the diversity in geography that we lack, you know, really. It's just a difficult board. They meet in the middle of the day. So that takes quite a few people out. I'm not sure if this is the one that has to be, is age restricted, has to be someone of a, of a certain age. I, this is the 60-plus rep.
Right.
Okay.
I just wanted to know before I, you know...
It, it can be anybody. I mean, I think in this particular instance, this is one that can really be anyone that's over 60.
Any one of us at any, any place.
Yeah. Any district.
Thank you.
And the person wouldn't have to be from her district, correct?
No, sir.
Could be anybody.
Right.
Okay.
Someone who's interested in senior issues.
Yes. Any other questions? Under pending. Okay. Let's look at current. Um, first one is Coastal Regional Solid Waste Management Authority. Mr. Jack White is on that, um, board and seeks reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I ask for Jack White's reappointment.
Second.
Okay. Are there any others for that seat? Okay. By acclamation, he will be appointed. The next one is Coastal Carolina Regional Airport Authority. Mr. Tyler Harris is on that board. He is seeking reappointment. I did speak with him. He very much would like to be reappointed. Do I have, uh?
I recommend that Tyler Harris be appointed.
Second.
Okay. By acclamation, are there any others for the airport board? Mr. Harris will be reappointed. Under Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Mr. Albert Lester seeks reappointment and Lieutenant Robert Holton Jr. seeks reappointment.
I would recommend that we reappoint both of those gentlemen.
Okay. Are there any other recommendations? Okay. By acclamation, they will be reappointed or will be appointed. Um, Voluntary Agriculture District Advisory Board. Jackie Anderson seeks reappointment. Dale Dawson seeks reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Anderson serves District One, Commissioner Mark's district. Dale Dawson serves District Two, which is, um, in the district in which I represent. I would ask that, I nominate both of those as for their reappointment.
Anyone else nominated? Okay. By acclamation, they will be reappointed. Anything else on appointments? You'll notice upcoming, we have the Senior Tarheel Legislation Committee. Uh, Dr. Judith Sinclair's name is down there. Um, so anybody have anything else on appointments? Okay. Moving to the next item will be Mr. Grady, County Attorney's Report.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have no report today. Um, but I will note you do have, um, an agenda item to consider appointments of Commissioners to various boards and committees.
I'm sorry. Repeat that, please?
I have no report, but you do, um, need to appoint, uh, County Commissioners to various boards and commissions.
Ah, yes. I, I got that coming up next.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I should have been ahead of your report and I thank you for that. Item B there under appointments. Appointment of County Commissioners to boards and committees. I spoke to each of you and there's only one change that we will be making. And that change will be, Madam Clerk, um, Mrs. Smith, Commissioner Smith is going to go on the PI, the Partners in Education Board. And other than that, all the boards and committees will stay as is. Anybody have anything else on that? Correction? No? Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate you being on the agenda, but I don't have any reports.
Okay. Item number nine, County Managers' Report.
Commissioners, Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I do have one piece of business today. Uh, last week, the city of New Bern approved a lease agreement for the Old Fire Miss Museum for us to take that over January 1st through sometime in the fall for the renovations of the senior center. So for the last year, we have, um, we've been using that facility as we've repaired and renovated the library. We've now moved out and got the library back online and we're going to need to do the same dance with the senior center. There's no cost to the lease. We do take care of the facility while we're there like we would anywhere. Um, but I do just, uh, if the board would agree for the chairman to author and sign and execute that agreement today, we'd like to go ahead and get that in place for the new year.
So moved.
Second.
We need a motion on that?
I, yep. We got a motion in a second. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Nobody's opposed? So we're good there, Jack?
Um, so last week I was able to attend a Krasama meeting in this room, Coastal Regional Solid Base Management Authority. Uh, had a great meeting. Um, of course, I was just reappointed. Thank you for that. It's a great organization, but there are a lot of moving pieces to it. Um, they have accelerated some of the landfill spaces available. So we will begin looking at an expansion related to that. Also in Carteret County, there's a facility there called a transfer station where the trash from Carteret flows through before it comes here. They've had a fire and also an expansion project that's been on the table since Hurricane Florence. They noticed some deficiencies in space and programming. Uh, both of those projects are underway. Um, it will cause some hiccups in the system, you know, just because we're turning it upside down, down there. But of course, um, Commissioner Jones and myself, uh, we're vigilant in what the cost to the consumer is there. We're always keeping that mindful. Um, the cost to dump trash at the landfill is directly reflective of what the trash ticker price is or what the consumer sees on our side. So we're going to remain vigilant on that as we move forward. Last week on Friday, I was able to attend the sheriff's open house. Uh, wanted to thank him for that. What a great event. It was good to see his folks and enjoy some fellowship there. And lastly, uh, to the Commissioners, Merry Christmas to you. Um, it's a time to be thankful. Life is awfully short sometimes. I'll just say that. Uh, but I'm thankful for you and I'm thankful for all the employees and citizens of this county that give us an opportunity to serve and, uh, make this place a little bit better every day. So thank you for that and Merry Christmas to you.
Thanks for what you do. Okay. County Commissioners' Report. Who would like to go first?
I just have a brief outline. Uh, I'd like to thank the sheriff again. I continue to see, receive positive comments about his tackling of the bus passing issue, uh, in Carolina Pines. Thanks to Jack White. I had a, had a resident concerned about our posting of our live meetings later and he addressed that for me. Um, thanks to Chad Strong. I continue to call him with it. People continue to call me with issues and he's quick to respond to that. So Merry Christmas and thanks Chad. And, uh, I'd like to note I, I attended an Eagle Scout ceremony last night at Garber, uh, for Erica Smith. And, uh, it is heartwarming to think at this time of the year, we have young people doing very fantastic things in our community. Um, it's, a lot of these Eagle Scouts do, whether it's building something for a park or in her case, a mobile library situation and getting that up and rolling for Pamlico in Craven and helping with that. So, um, that'll be it. Thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Smith?
I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and have a safe and joyous holiday.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve. The work with you has been a, a great experience. And, uh, I would identify Chad Strong as well for the work that he's done in my community and for my citizens, including, um, refurbishing the yards in the center. Everyone is very, um, ecstatic about what you've done there and seeing to, um, the Baptist on a mission to help the family in my community who really needed home repair in such a, in such a, a way that they actually decided to tear down their own old home and put a new one there. And you have taken care, lead it ship in that. And, um, also we're still dealing with the beavers and you are out front with that. But everyone, I just can't, I can't say enough about the staff. Everyone has been so willing and, and helpful. So, um, I do appreciate everything that you all are doing and including Jack, I call him all the time, and Jean. So, and I'm beginning to work on a young man over there as well. So, so thank you all for all that you do, all that you do for our, my community. And Sheriff, I won't leave you out as well. And, uh, he's, therefore is no, well, my, my community is actually in the city, but I can call him anytime and he responds and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
She said everything I was going to say.
Yeah. No, you just say did.
Merry Christmas, everyone. I'm looking forward to 2025. It's going to be another great year in Craven County.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, two things. I'm talking about, uh, Krasama this morning as County Manager did. Um, Krasama is paying for roadside pickup beginning today along US 70 or on the four lane. When I came through, they were beginning to do that. So that's one of two that are, that is provided by our landfill, uh, in addition to, um, I think two that the state pays for. So, um, we will be able to see a little bit of, um, pickup, less trash along the four lane during the holiday season. We're thankful for that. Second item, Mr. Chairman, with the board's permission this morning, I, I want to address an issue that, uh, of great concern for Western Craven County. Um, at the intersection of Tuscaloosa Rims Road, Dry Mania Road, Road and Old US 70, um, we have had a number of accidents there this year. And Friday evening, we had, um, a really bad one. Um, our planning department along with the County Manager and his staff met with DOT and myself at, at this, um, location about over a year ago. And, um, you know, it continues to be a problem. I think DOT is definitely willing to, to do some things, but, uh, in wanting to make sure we did the right thing at, at this intersection. It's very busy with the landfill being, uh, close by, big trucks trying to turn in and out there. Uh, today with your permission, Mr. Chairman, and the board's permission, I'd like to ask if we could to, um, ask Ms. Chad Strong, who did come this morning, I asked him to, um, and County Administration staff to have discussions, uh, immediately with North Carolina Department of Transportation to ask them if they would to conduct a review of the recent crash data for this intersection and to come up with some ideas in how we could best address it. Um, I think DOT might be looking to the county for, um, some guidance, um, with that, as you've already experienced in, in your district. So, um, we want to make sure that this intersection is safe, but we want to make sure whatever's done is the right thing. And, um, so with the board's permission today, I'd like, if we could, just to ask them if they would go ahead and begin working on that. So.
Mr. Vice Chair, could I amend that to say sooner rather than later for?
We don't need a motion, Jack, right? We just need to agree. Everybody okay with that? Um, tying in with that, it's been a while since DOT has been here and given us an update on all the projects. So why don't we, um, maybe separately?
Yeah.
Uh, why don't we, with that?
There's, there's actually a good reason, uh, for to have the community. As we'll have a new division engineer in January. Uh, latest had been announced, correct Chad? Mary Beth House will be our new division engineer. Jeremy Stroud will be moving on to global transport. So I'd love to have her in in January, February. I don't want to introduce herself to you, but maybe bring some staff in Chad doing some daily projects and the whole game.
What's her name?
Mary Beth House.
Okay. Maybe give her a few weeks to get her feet on the ground and then schedule, have her come in and, um, let's do that update as we've done in the past. I think that's always helpful that we can speak, uh, with some accuracy to our constituents about what plans are being, being done. And for the public, maybe, uh, also, uh, Wendy Johnson, uh, could be at that meeting and, and, uh, give us an update on the bypass progress. And they are making progress, but it's still a lot to be done. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, you said one thing. Sheriff, I, I need to recognize him. Him and his staff have been patrolling this area. Um, residents have been telling me they see, um, somebody from the sheriff's office through there, um, daily almost. So it might be Chad, sheriff might have some recommendations to, you know, he might could provide to, to help in those discussions. So, but thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Yeah. Thank you to, uh, everybody on the staff, Jack, all your people, all the department managers, everybody. Um, I'm impressed continually with the good job that your, your team does at, um, making this county move along. So thank you for that. Merry Christmas to everybody. Um, anybody have anything else? Okay. We're going to take a recess and go into closed session. Um, yeah.
Motion needs to, uh, reference General Statute 143, 31811A3 for attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Motion is second. Going closed session. All favors, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We are going to take a short recess.